Doesn't sound like Mike.
Okay. I'd like to call this meeting to order. This is a meeting of the Town of Buna Vista Board of Trustees. Today is Tuesday, September thirteenth, twenty twenty-two, and the time is seven oh five P M. Would you join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Okay, thanks.
We'll do rolls call first. Okay.
We'll do rolls call first. Okay.
Okay.
Be okay.
Here.
Here.
Trusty Hilton Higa.
Here.
Trusty Jenkins.
Here.
Trusty McCrancy.
Here.
Trusty Rowe.
Here.
And Trusty Swisher.
Here.
The Pledge of Allegiance.
My Pledge of Allegiance. The United States of America. And to the world, to our families, one nation. We deserve all, liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. So we have a special evening tonight with two people joining the staff on the town. This is, for us, a very important position as administrator and another position as police officer. So Paula, does this go to you?
Yes. What we'll do is we'll start with Lisa.
Okay.
So I'll read the oath and you'll read after me, then we'll have you sign it.
Okay.
Would you prefer to have your right hand raised or not? It's your choice. Okay. I'm Lisa Purnell Rowe.
I'm Lisa Purnell Rowe.
Do you affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States?
Do you affirm that I'll support the Constitution of the United States?
The Constitution of the State of Colorado?
The Constitution of the State of Colorado.
The laws of the State of Colorado?
The laws of the State of Colorado.
The ordinances of Town of Buna Vista?
The ordinances of the Town of Buna Vista.
And will faithfully perform the duties?
And will faithfully perform the duties?
Of the office of Town Administrator upon which I'm about to enter?
Of the office of Town Administrator upon which I am about to enter?
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Thank you. Let's see. Chief Morgan is going to say a few words for us. He's going to give to Michelle.
Yes, I will make it very brief. Thank you, Gordon Mayor. I'd like to introduce Michelle Flores. You guys will step up here and join me, and this is her husband, Leo Flores, who's a police officer with the Salida Police Department. Michelle served as an officer in Texas prior to moving to Colorado a few years ago. And then she served here for several years on Chaffey County Fire Department. And has decided to come back to law enforcement. We're very happy for that. Officer Flores, congratulations on your recent graduation from the Police Academy and passing the post exam. As you enter into the law enforcement profession, you'll have to bear responsibility for helping to keep our community safe, to help those in need, that you may be called on to run toward danger, acting as that thin D-line that places you in harm in order to keep our citizens from harm. With a heavy heart, I must point out that this badge you are being given tonight is shrouded. When a peace officer in Colorado falls in the line of duty, we all shroud our badges in honor and respect of one who gave all to protect the citizens of this state. The ultimate example of sacrifice and courage. We wear this shroud for following our bad at police officer Dylan Baikoff, shot and killed in the line of duty this past Sunday, September eleventh. Know that with service of this nature, there is often an emotional cost on officers and their families. For these reasons, law enforcement is an honorable profession, and you have answered a noble call to service and sacrifice. I am encouraged that your husband Leo is here to support you as police families and spouses see firsthand what this job can do to an officer over the years, and they are our strongest allies and support. Take care of them and love them, and do not let the stress of the job steal your joy with them. This badge is a symbol of the ideals of fidelity, strength, and honor. It's a sacred trust given to you not just by me, but by the citizens of Buna Vista. There is a foundation of trust between the citizens of Buna Vista and the B V P D. And as a new officer, you must be a keeper of this trust. This trust is part of a legacy built by former B V P D officers and leaders, as well as the current members of the B V P D. This trust is bound to your duties, as referenced in our mission statement, to enforce the law by being fair, firm, and impartial. As you take this badge, I charge you to keep the faith. That is, to serve our citizens with courage and honor, to hold sacred the trust and authority given to you by the citizens, to be mindful of the legacy built by those who came before you, and to be firm yet fair in the administration of your duties as a police officer for the Town of Buna Vista. Leo.
Leo, no, don't. Okay. Michelle Flores.
I'm Michelle Flores.
You swear by the Everly, uh, do you swear by the Everly God that I will support the Constitution of the United States?
That I will support the Constitution of the United States?
The Constitution of the State of Colorado?
The Constitution of the State of Colorado?
The laws of the State of Colorado?
The laws of the State of Colorado?
The ordinances of Town of Buna Vista?
The ordinances of the Town of Buna Vista?
And will faithfully perform the duties of the office of police officer?
And will faithfully perform the duties of the office of police officer?
Upon which you're about to enter?
To the best of my ability.
Upon which I'm about to enter?
To the best of my ability.
Thank you.
Thank you. Now we'll move to the adoption of the agenda. Does anybody have any comments or changes on the agenda as we might? This is the amended agenda. They have a motion to approve the agenda, the amended agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda that's amended.
Second. We got Mark Jenkins Cobb. And then we'll move to the consent agenda.
You call for both.
Okay.
Motion, please, mayor.
Hi.
Hi.
Any opposed? Thank you. And we'll move to the consent agenda. Anybody have any changes or additions, deletions? This includes a change on the town bank accounts. So Lisa would be a signer, and Philip will not. He's the box and he can move his money around, but he doesn't get to sign the checks. So can I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Gratzie. Hold on, please. Consent agenda?
Hi. Hi.
Any opposed? Okay, the consent agenda is approved. Now we'll move on to public comments. And as you came in the door, there was a clipboard on which you could sign in and indicate the reason for your public comment. So we have one person signed in, Grace Garrett. Grace. Please give us your name and your address, and you have three minutes.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Grace Garrett. I live at one eleven Meadow Lane. And I am championing, all of us as residents, to receive home delivery mail just like everybody else in the world gets. And so last month, March twenty-five years since the post office bid to us and told us that we had completed a survey saying that we overwhelmingly wanted to pay for P O boxes instead of have home delivery. This marks six years now that we have been actively fighting with the post office at various levels to get home delivery. Currently, all in-town citizens of B V are required to pay for post office boxes. There is no free delivery as required by the Constitution, as required by U S Code Title thirty-nine, Section one oh one B of the USPS regulations. You have in your packets a letter dated seven September of this year that was submitted to the USPS last Wednesday and to Senator Bennett's office. We are asking the Town of Buna Vista to support this letter. We are also asking the Commissioners for Chaffey County to endorse this letter. Besides, excuse my French, suing these people, we don't know what else to do. We know that there are many people here that can't afford the exorbitant rates, rates which have gone from sixty-four to hundred and sixty-six dollars in two years, which equates to about three hundred thousand dollars a year. And my guesstimate, close guesstimate, is north of five point six million dollars since the survey happened and we became, it became mandatory that we pay for P O boxes. So we are asking, so I'm here to answer any questions you may have about the letter. I'll set up a meeting, Mayor Fay, with a four-page, here's all of your own regulations that you're breaking, Mr. Post Office Man, and here's what we would like. Basically, the bottom line of what we're asking is stop charging us immediately for P O boxes and get us home delivery.
Thank you, Grace. We won't, we, well, if anybody has questions, they can ask Grace. But we will be discussing this at the end of our agenda in the trustee staff interaction.
Okay. Would you like to have a copy of this four-page thing in case somebody has a question?
I'd migrate it here, but I'd also like it electronically so that I can send it to the board members.
Yes. Any questions for me? Okay, so give you this. Yeah.
Thank you for all the hard work that you're putting in on this.
No.
Lisa, is there anybody on Zoom who would like to be making a public comment?
I don't believe so, but I do think we have. Is people scouted some, to give some public comment?
Oh, great.
I apologize. I did not know. You're into this.
Okay.
If you guys don't mind.
Uh, no, I'd like to, I'd like to hear from you for sure.
Perfect.
Please take the podium.
Yeah. All right, starting out, my name is Blake Carrier. I'm a senior at Buna Vista High School and currently a senior patrol leader at our local troop here. I'm here to present to you my ECO projects and see if you guys have any comments or concerns. I'll start by handing out some of these photos to give you kind of a visual representation of what I'm working on today.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, on the sheet, I have a little outline of what it's actually going to look like. And the spot it's going to be, it's actually very close to here. It's going to be right behind the South Woke Hills, right over there. I already got approval from the Rock Board, from Earl Richmond as well. He's my project advisor, so I've already got a couple thumbs up from him. And I'm very excited. So just kind of an explanation of what this project is. It's going to be a metal telescope that's going to be pointing at each of the peaks. It's going to be purely metal and it's going to be something that's going to be perfect for little kids and adults to learn a little bit about our mountains. It's going to teach them a little bit about the names and the heights of these mountains, and it's going to be purely easy to use and fun. Just about the structure of it, it's going to be placed onto a concrete platform, then it's going to be screwed into that. So in terms of stability, it's just purely metal and it's going to be structured very well. So far, do we have any questions concerning my project?
Does it have any lenses or is it just a metal tube that you look?
Little tube that you look through. So it's going to be a metal ridge that you can line up across. It's going to point out each of the peaks that you can look through. And it's going to be a nice little project that I can hopefully let the kids all see each of the peaks and learn about the names and the heights and elevation.
Can't wait to learn that myself.
That is myself. I've only been here for about like two years. I have little clue about the names of like each of the mountains, especially from this perspective.
Yeah. And how is it that the peaks are identified? How does a user see which peak they're looking at?
On the little sheets, if you look at the right diagram, you see like little notches, and that will line up with the peak, and it'll be the name and the elevation right below it.
Okay, cool.
How far, how far north and how far south can it go?
So we have yet to really get the exact degrees, but it's definitely going to encompass the full mountain range.
Right, cool, great.
All right. It's a nice project. Look forward to seeing it.
Very nice.
Do you have any other questions?
Thank you. Good luck.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Will.
Yeah, thanks for coming tonight.
Of course. Thank you, guys.
Okay, if there's no other public comment, we can move on to staff reports. I'll start with the Town Administrator. But.
He's also showing.
Learning.
So see, that's a good segue. Yes, you'll see from my report, I've already started immersing myself, and I think when I wrote that report, it was on day two. But on day six, I'm, you know, and I expect the learning curve to continue for a while, but I'm really immersing myself first and foremost by, I put together a calendar for our team leads, and I've asked them all to put a time on the calendar of a half a day, about three to four hours where I can tour each department, really get to know each staff, and kind of what everyone's doing. So just really kind of information gathering, seeing how the organization as, as a whole is put together in different municipalities that can look different. And so I think that's the very first thing that's important is to understand, you know, what does your recreation department encompass as far as tasks and responsibilities and now how, what, what responsibilities and skill sets are, are done by each person? And then also just to personally meet them, it still is very important. So that's really kind of what I've been doing besides the learning curve here with Philip. We've done some transition meetings and then really sticking my calendar together. There's just a lot of meetings and that's great, but I just trying to make sure that I am able to immerse myself in all the different community areas as well. So if you, if you have anything that you're interested in inviting me to, I, I would definitely like to try to get to know each group in each area as much as I can. And I think that's pretty much it, really, so.
Just a tendency on that old conference material and everything about us.
Right, okay.
That's right. Highly recommended.
And I should say that, you know, I would like to sit down with each one of these two and do the same thing, that it, I just like staffed it is the first and foremost responsibility. And so I'm, I'm really just interested in getting to know all of them, so. But, so that's it.
All right, pictures from the C M L.
Yeah, that wasn't me. That was from.
It wasn't you.
Yeah.
Yeah, but well, please welcome aboard.
Thank you.
In all seriousness, we are thrilled to have you.
I, I'm thrilled to be here. Thank you. Enjoy it. All right, on day six.
I think you'll find a very continual staff and the board, board's all right.
Yes. And you'll see in my report, I've been just very, very blessed and thankful for just the way staff is already, just on my initial impressions. Very professional and everyone really has a good brass so far that I've interfaced with on what their duties and responsibilities are and good group of people. You guys have.
That, that is not a surprise. We, I would agree.
I mean, it's just really great, so. And also you guys too, so, you know, from what I meant.
Now, this is a very good word.
Yes. Write my report.
Thanks. Well, Philip, as backfilling, what else do you have to report?
Uh, I'm thrilled to have Lisa on, probably more than anyone else. Yeah, she's doing great, retaining a whole lot, because yeah, we're starting to really unleash the context and background of everything, but she's doing great, so, thank you. My report, treasure report on page one oh eight.
Thank you, treasure report.
I will just highlight that a couple of things. We did close on our loan, which will be forgivable towards our water treatment plant, the design and engineering, so that's great. We're spending money on that pretty quickly now, so it'd be nice to recruit the three hundred thousand. And then also, thanks to Sean and J B A and Swift Water. That's Paul Young, and you'll remember Alan Smith. They're consultant engineers that are advising us on the project too. They helped us with submitting a, another DOLA grant in the amount of seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars to go towards the water treatment plant expansion. So fingers crossed on that. We had a, you know, a good, a good success story with them earlier in the year, and the we will have a DOLA representative coming to town at the end of the month to come tour the water plant, the water facility, and get a better idea about the project, so we're hopeful we can get some more money. With that, it's a typical report with payroll and expenditures since our, since our last meeting and expenditures, checks over two thousand dollars, and I will take any questions you may have.
So this one question, is, is there a timetable for when you'll hear on the DOLA grant roughly?
They are, since they've changed their process, we find out a lot sooner. I don't know the specific date, but it's probably before the end of the year we'll know, and then it would be a twenty twenty-three when I think we've been in our contract, if we are successful.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, now I'd like to hear from the police chief.
Hey, everybody. Can you hear me all right?
Yeah.
All right, I'll go through my report here really quickly. We had a back-to-school night in early August. It was very successful. That gives us an opportunity to interact with a lot of the parents and students in the community, and we give them information on our standard response safety protocols. Chaffey County SWAT team showed up with their big SWAT vehicle and a lot of their gear, like the robot and the drone and things like that, so that was really cool. I want to thank them for that. Officer England is transitioning into the school resource officer, officer position really well. He's attended several meetings with the schools, with staff and students. Recently, the school, the kids do something called the Monday Minute, where they interview each other and staff and things like that. They did a pretty good interview with Jake that I've got, where he talks about some of his favorite things, so you can read about that a little bit there. It's a fun position. We're meeting with the school, let's see here, actually, we met within today to talk about issues related to sexting, which is a problem in a lot of communities, and helping to train staff on proper ways to deal with that if, if they encounter it, and to help their students if something like that comes about. And last week, Sergeant Cortez with the Sheriff's Office and Officer Megan and I, we met with the school board to talk about the S R O position, school safety, trends related to juvenile crimes. And as you can see there, we're definitely seeing an increase in some of that. With the S R O position, we, we actually have it in policy that we try to find alternatives to using the justice system for more minor things. But sometimes there's some pretty serious crimes that usually it's a summons and release to mom and dad, but if it goes beyond that into a felony or a violent crime, we go through a screening process through the state, and often they'll screen to Youth Corrections in Pueblo. And just in August, we had three of those, five, five for total this year, so that's kind of a concerning trend. I've just listed some other crime stats there. I think you have the data from our dispatch center about our calls. I broke down just some of the specific things that are a little easier to, to see. Some of the trends, I just did it from July first through September eighth, when I typed this report. You can see pretty similar trends with our crashes, domestic violence, things like that. But overall case reports, we had a hundred sixty-five this year in that timeframe versus a hundred twenty-two last year, so that's a pretty sizable increase, and we've been short-staffed by two officers, so really excited to get Officer Flores on board and hitting the streets with us. We did our driver's training. It's required by post. We did one class on August twenty-fourth and once, or one on the seventh. Alamosa has a driving track for law enforcement down there, so that's where we did that. Getting a lot of traffic complaints in town. When we do get those complaints, we are responsive to them. I was talking to Sean with Public Works, and it seems like we're getting speeding complaints on just about every street. Last week, some of our officers were busy, so I personally went out and ran radar in some of the areas for half hour to an hour. Definitely seeing some speeding in the mornings at the school zone from students. So we had a few chats with some students last week, so hopefully they'll get the message and slow it down a little bit. Some of those neighborhoods on the way to the high school, it's only twenty miles an hour, and there's a lot of foot traffic and kids and vehicles, so we definitely want people to be careful over there. The police versus firefighter softball game went really well. We raised about a thousand for Chaffey County, County Crime Stoppers, as well as some money for the Cordova family. Billy Cordova, his memorial was August twenty-seventh, and we were able to assist with honor guard duties on that. And that was an honor for us, and I think it was very meaningful to the fire department and the, and the family. And just the last couple of things, we're doing our physical fitness challenge on September twenty-eighth. And officers can get a monetary reward if they pass the challenge, and it's pretty, um, pretty tough. Last time we did it, I think it was in March, I think only about half of us passed, so hopefully we get a little more success rate with this one. And then September fourteenth, tomorrow, we're doing what's called the nine eleven stair challenge. We're doing it on Wednesday because that's our overlap day where we can all train together. And that is to honor the three hundred forty-three firefighters who died at the World Trade Center on nine eleven, and they had gone up a hundred ten stories in bunker gear. So we'll be doing it in our tactical gear, which is about forty pounds. So we're going to go from the bridge in the River Park up to the Midland Trail and back, which is about a mile. So not a hundred ten stories, but it's still a nice way for us to stay in shape and honor the first responders from nine eleven. Lastly, and again, anybody that wants to join us, meet us at the River Park. We'll probably be down there about three forty-five tomorrow. Bring water, it's going to be hot. Lastly, a couple of things that happened after I typed this report. The Chaffey County SWAT team, it's a combined team that has members of the Buna Vista Police Department, Sheriff's Office, and Salida Police. They were called to Castilla County on Friday to help with an active shooter situation that police officers pinned down. And our officers and also the officers from Alamosa SWAT did come under fire. Everyone is okay. They did get the suspect into custody. They used tactical options like C S gas and less lethal rounds, and they took the suspect into custody without anyone getting injured, so really great job to all of those guys, and I'm really glad everyone came out of that okay. And that's about all I have. I'm happy to take any questions, and you can also see on the last couple pages just some photos of our driving training and back-to-school night. Thank you.
Thank you, chief. Does anyone have any questions for?
I, I just have one. Chief, the seventy-four percent increase, is that all across the board, or are there particular types of cases that are contributing to that?
Um, that's across the board, so I could look and break it down, but, um, it has just been a very busy time of the year, so that can be everything from traffic crashes to, like I referenced, there are domestic violence thefts. I know today Megan, who's on light duty, she's helping with some cold reports. Within an hour, she took two stolen bicycle reports, so it's all manner of things.
Thank you. Anybody else have police questions? Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Now the fire chiefs.
Good evening, everybody. A couple of things with our September was definitely tough, uh, month for our fire department. We had the memorial service for Chief Cordova and and we had to, uh, bring his remains home after the meeting, uh, last month. If you guys saw that on Main Street, there is, there are a lot of people that came out for that. Every fire department along the way, actually had some people sitting out there. So as they started coming up from Manatee Springs, got to Cascade, there's firefighters out there all the way through Hartzell. Ladder truck with the flag hanging over the road. So it was definitely a, uh, great thing for the family. So you know, it was a tough weekend through that and, you know, now we're in normal business, kind of the, the new norm. So besides that, we've got, uh, kind of some exciting staffing changes for us. Been promoted to give position of fire marshal. So she's going to be in charge of all the fire inspections, all of that. She'll be in charge of hiring more inspection staff to help her with it. Um, so it's a great thing for her. She does great with what she's doing. The downside with that is we'll lose administrative duty. So we'll be looking to hire administrative, uh, assistant to replace that and then additional fire inspector. Pretty exciting for us. Um, training, kind of our big focus on JPR is recertifications. So every, every year we have to go through and, uh, go through a checklist of things, be able to recertify us, um, with the state. We'll just see on that. Um, and also we're going to be hosting a class, the first part of October first and second called the Can Man, where it's actually some instructors from, uh, FDNY are coming out here and, you know, bringing some outside training in. So we'll have, we've opened it up to neighboring fire departments as well. So we'll have two days of pretty intensive hands-on training down at our training center. So we're, we're pretty excited about that coming. Um, still working on the ISO process for the rating. Um, and then, uh, Liberty Weekend, we may saw us out dodging cars in the intersections. Yeah, we're set, set up a main street up here as well as the stoplight down in Pontius Springs and, uh, all the money collected, we raised twenty-two thousand, two hundred and eighteen dollars, twenty-two cents for muscular dystrophy. So this is a record year for us. We're, we're very excited about that. And one of the things with that is, you know, all the front range fire departments do it as well, but we, we make the same amounts as the front range departments. We go run, run for their money up here. I think most of the people from the front range are up here. Yeah. So, so that was exciting. Our things we got going on, we'll be at the bonfire on Friday for the homecoming. Bonfires will be there with a truck. We've been working with them to, to get that all set up. Happy with the new location out at the rodeo grounds. It's up there and trying to squeeze it in by the high school. So definitely excited about that. Um, other things going on, our station four is still apparently moving forward. I think they finally found our door. So we are hopeful that this year we might be able to move in. So, um, keep waiting on that. We, uh, uh, this week we did the first of our JP Chips events, the four that we're going to be doing. Uh, yesterday we hauled out, uh, twenty-six trailer loads of slash from, uh, Meadow Lake Estates, which is north of town. So we're pretty excited with turnout with that. And then we've got the three more events coming up this year. Other things we're going to be busy with, uh, development report, but we're going to be at the, uh, uh, Colorado versus Texas tomato war. Be staying by out there and then hose tomato off of things when it's done. Uh, so that'll be an interesting thing. I didn't attend last year. And then we'll have, uh, our crews out there staffing the concert renewal at the Meadows. So we'll be out there staffing twenty-four seven during the event. It's a lot of stuff staged there. Um, outside of that, call volume still is, uh, increasing for us. So it's just, I think more people, more things going on. A lot of that's also medical calls. We've been responding more of those because the ambulance has been busy too. So, but, uh, it's great. We've been working together and be able, able to get this stuff taken care of. So is that, that's all I've got. Unless anybody has any questions.
Do we have a process, uh, for evaluating how our agreement with you is going? I have the feeling it goes well for us. Is it, is it beneficial to, to your budget and such? You servicing our area?
Yeah. So I think, I think it's beneficial for everybody. I, I feel we do offer big service. We don't have the, you know, kind of the weird dynamic with stations being in town and all that. So I think it's been working out well for us. We do have a thing on there that we're supposed to sit down annually uh, with town administrators. So, um, be a good time to, to chat with you, Lisa, and get an understanding of that and your future when you, when you get time and you know, it takes a little bit starting a new, new position that
Right.
you are. So just reach out whenever you have time. There is a clause in there that we, we look at it with the town administrator, you know, if we feel any change and we can either try to get a committee together or just bring it straight to our boards.
Right. Good.
Chief, I have a question about as far as the future of development, as far as access with your, with your trucks and everything. When, when we're going through that process for new development, do you have certain requirements as far as access and, and what's that you can get your vehicles into?
We do. I mean, we, we go off the international fire code. Um, so that bases everything with that. Uh, you know, so for new subdivisions, different things like that, we go through and re- review. Um, Kira's got a program where she can measure everything and then we make the recommendations to do that. So that's in the subdivision process as well as any time structures are, are put up. For instance, we were down in South Maine with our tower the other day, just trying to see if we could even get the truck into a place where they want to build.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're, we're involved through that whole, whole process of commercial stuff. Now residential is a different story. We, we don't have much say in it except for in the subdivision phase.
I see. Thank you.
Any other prior questions? Okay.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you, Chief.
So we will hear from the airport manager.
Evening, Mayor, uh, trustees and, um, staff. Um, so the airport report can be found on page one hundred eighteen. Uh, our reports, all our staff are back. We've been all around all summer, taking holidays and, um, just been out of staff, but everybody's back. We are now, uh, back in full swing, pretty busy right now. We have Leonardo here with a big helicopter. Uh, it's a AW one oh one for testing. I'll get to that. Uh, as far as airport business hats, we had to barbecue on the twenty-fifth. Pretty good turnout, seven helicopters, uh, just a good collection of them. Like a Chinook and Blackhawks and Dakotas. So we had thirty-some, thirty-plus crew members here. One of the, uh, chief one officers was retired. We had a little special event for him, cake and um, a lot of staff, thank you very much for coming out and trustees visiting us. Uh, it was a good turnout. We sold over twenty-two hundred gallons of fuel. So uh, did a little bit of math. We cleared probably over seven thousand dollars in, in funds by time what we spend on fuel and what we sold it for. So that was a good, good event. Uh, this weekend also the UAS had a, uh, their, their annual roundup. Uh, you might've saw some drones over in the drone park. Uh, on Saturday and Sunday, they had a demonstration and they had night racing with the drones. So I think this, you're going to see this become a bigger and bigger event. It's pretty exciting. It's a new technology coming in. With that, we're sort of aligning ourselves with the UAS County club and they've been asking if they could have a office here. And they may approach the board of trustees in the very near future. So I thought I'd bring it up. As far as the airport is concerned, we are, we would support it, but we only have one spot that we can give them. It's a, it's what we had is the weather office. Uh, we still have equipment in there, uh, routers and stuff for, to monitor our weather. And these folks more than welcome to use it because, uh, we'd find there, they would be responsible enough not to bother the equipment. So they just need a sort of a desk to do a little bit of work and store some of their equipment for the club. So if, I, I expect that they will come at some point, uh, and present their proposal to the board of trustees and, um, and of course I'll probably be there, but just to lean ahead a bit, we are in support of it, uh, based on if the town staff and the trustees do approve it. Just wanted to let you know about that. There's really only one option for them. Uh, operation wise, uh, Gusto Philadelphia was here, um, earlier in the summer and then they came back and they had another helicopter flying around. Um, so they were based out of Leadville, but they did a few operations here, uh, twenty-first to twenty-third of August. We did get a few, uh, complaints, noise complaints, as they were here pretty early in the morning, as all the testing is. We did respond. One was a phone call and I, I spoke with the, the, the lady with that and explained why testing happens in the morning and and the fact that, uh, this is a general aviation, open airspace. We really don't have much control over people flying. They can fly any much what they want. Another one was an email response and we did respond to that as well. Right now, as I mentioned earlier, Leonardo, you, it's the UK division. They're here with a helicopter. They, um, they're just getting ready to start testing. And again, they'll be up right and early in the mornings. Uh, this is a rather large helicopter, so it will be a little noisier than the other ones. So, but it, it would pay the bills. Uh, they're supposed to be here till probably about the first week of October. We may get the Boeing and Augusta back again, uh, towards the end of September. Uh, we're still, we're still working on that. So, oh no, we're having a pretty good summer, uh, with, you know, the testing in the larger aircraft and you'll see in the charts below later. Uh, we just, uh, received another load of jet fuel. So, and we will probably get another one within a week. So that would put us the most fuel we've purchased in the last two, two years. So we're doing pretty well in that. This weekend, we have a parachute club, the, uh, Colorado Mountain Skydiving will be coming here and, and doing parachute operations and, uh, open to the public. Anybody wants to have some tandem jumps, uh, the, you can see in our report, there's a website, a phone number you can call. They'll be here Saturday morning and most of the day in they're, uh, they're going to be jumping here and then I think they're going to do a demo down, down and slide it during the tomato wars. So, uh, if you call that number, if you want to, uh, jump out of an airplane, it's a tandem because you've strapped somebody else. Well, something goes wrong, you sort of bounce off the guy that you're strapped to, just make sure.
That's reassuring.
A little bit of cushion there. And, uh, just a reminder, fifteen October, we'll, well, we'll more information as we get closer. That is going to be our fly-in. Uh, it looks like we might have a couple of nice planes coming in for that, uh, some of the Second World War aircraft. So we're looking forward to that and we'll hopefully that does take off. And then down below, you can see our, our, um, table, uh, charts. Some of the ops are a bit low, but you can see a real significant jump this year in our heavy traffic or heavy aircraft. Uh, those are the big jets. So from, uh, we had fifty-two operations this month compared to thirty-two last month. And it was even lower or correction last year at this time and in, in twenty twenty, which I don't have here, was even lower. So we're, we, the trend is we're seeing larger, more larger aircraft coming to this airport. Uh, it's picking up, which results in, you know, more fees and more fuel. And you can see a big jump in fuel. Uh, our Jet A thirteen thousand plus gallons last month compared to nine thousand last year. And the previous year was even lower than that. So, uh, we're trending well. Um, that's my report. If you have any questions, more than happy to have.
Thank you, Jack. Where does a person sign up for the jumping?
Yeah, there, that website you go there or that phone number, you can just give them a call. Where did I, I guess, yeah, just tell them you're part of the airport thing and we had a catchphrase there. What was it? Boogie nights? Yes. So if you mention boogie nights, you get a ten percent discount. For real, boogie nights, yeah.
Thanks, Jack. Real quick for clarification, the fly-in, is it, uh, it's October fifteenth, correct?
Yes, fifteenth, which is a Saturday. Oh, I see. Yep. Sorry typo there. It says five.
I just want to make sure everybody heard it right. So you said it right.
No. Yep, there's a typo. That should say fifteen, not five. My apologies.
And Jack, I mentioned at the last meeting, you weren't there, but I did hear some complaints about those early morning hour uh, helicopters and I'm sure you heard, obviously you heard them too. Um, I was curious about, you, you know, the flight path. Obviously I'm not a professional at this, but you know, our landing flight path is over the bulk of town. Is there a way to change that at, at those times or is it pretty set in stone?
Well, the, the, uh, the actual flight path for incoming and outgoing aircraft do go in that direction, like one, five and three, three. So it it goes over town, but for the testing wise, they tend to, they don't really fly, they're not going to be over town. They're really over the runway and, and normally to the south end of the runway, which there's a community there. So for testing wise, it's just because it's loud, it does reverberate over town, but they're not hovering or coming in over the town for testing. They tend to hover right over the runway area and the airfield. But for normal aircraft traffic, there's not much deviation for it. It's, it, you know, if they're coming from the north, it's because that's the wind direction and they have to land into the wind and take off into the wind.
Yeah, that's what I figured. It'd just be good. That's good clarification. So I can pass that along.
And again, the testing is because that's just the nature where we are. The winds are the lowest, the, um, the air density is just the right amount. It's not too hot, not too cool. So, uh, that's why they do the testing early in the morning. It's, yeah.
So Jack, are you actually at the Colorado National Monument?
No, I was there a lot, uh, this weekend. I did the, uh, rode the, what they call the tour of the moon. So that's a question of honor. We had a road through there this weekend.
Nice. Beautiful.
Yeah, it's awesome. First time. Beautiful.
Thank you. Okay. So we're ready for one business item. Which has to do with the purchase and sale agreement for the, um, current police station owned by Heart of the Rockies Regional Medical Center.
I think you covered it. Yeah. So this is coming back to you all. Uh, we did discuss it last meeting. It's been so long. Two weeks ago. We currently have a lease purchase agreement, uh, on the property, including the existing, uh, police station in the vacant lots just to the west, uh, there. And we, uh, we owe just over three hundred thousand on that lease purchase agreement. So before you tonight is a draft, it's a resolution, uh, so you'd be approving by resolution. Uh, but the actual agreement is, is in draft form. Uh, we're still, uh, reviewing with the, uh, Heart of the Rockies, um, legal team, but it's a pretty standard purchase and sale agreement. So, um, I, they don't anticipate many changes, if any. Uh, we don't either, but, uh, we felt comfortable to bring this, uh, uh, to you tonight. So you can see in the purchase and sale agreement, there's a combination of five thousand earnest money uh, plus, uh, the remaining amount, purchase price. So that puts it just around three hundred and four thousand dollars and some change. Uh, so about what we anticipated last time we discussed this. I do want to, um, share with you a, uh, view here. Sorry, I'm trying to make the numbers as large as I can without losing it on the screen here, but um, I did work up, uh, an updated fund balance summary today, um, as of today. Full year projection at the end of the year. And, uh, we looked at this in a little more detail, um, a couple of meetings ago during the quarterly report, but uh, so for general fund, I'll scroll over here to the right. So right now, not taking into consideration, uh, uh, purchasing this, uh, purchasing this property. Uh, we are projecting after we do all of the fund transfers to, uh, true up the capital improvement fund. We kind of talked about that last time. We anticipate just a little over a million dollars in Um, we anticipate just a little over a million dollars in unrestricted fund balance in the general fund. Okay, so a, an approval, uh, to move forward with this purchase would also need to come with, uh, an amendment. Or our adjustment amendment to the budget. And we'll talk about that in just a second. But it would come out of this unrestricted fund balance. More than likely, we'll have excess sales tax for the remainder of the year. That will also help, but for now, we're not gonna project that. We're just gonna say we're gonna have budgeted revenue for the remainder of the year. And this is about where we'll end up with on unrestricted fund balance. Okay. So, uh, this does include, as if you remember last time, we talked about the All-Hazard Response Fund that's shutting down. That we had an additional fund balance there that we would move over to the general fund. This does, uh, take that into consideration. So you'll see. But, uh, it's, it's showing a zero fund balance there. So, um, that's incorporated into this number right here. So looking at our existing budget, um, we actually budgeted almost two hundred and ninety thousand dollars. In the police, uh, budget for the building lease and loan payments account. That was a, that was anticipating a full year of paying off, paying towards our new loan. Uh, on the police station and a full year of lease payments on the old police station. So if we move forward with this, uh, we actually can utilize unspent funds there, um, towards this. And so we're really only, uh, going to amend the budget by a hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars. Uh, to complete this purchase, because we're only making one loan, loan payment this year. And we won't have the remain, remaining lease payments, uh, for, for the rest of the year. So, um, with that, uh, that would essentially draw down that under unrestricted fund balance down to about nine hundred thousand. Hopefully that makes a little sense there. Yeah, I'm seeing. Not, okay, good. So, uh, you can consider approving the purchase and sale agreement by resolution. And then I would ask for the board to, uh, follow that up with a motion to, uh, amend the budget. By one hundred and thirty-one thousand, we can say a hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars. To a budget for this. And I'll answer any questions you may have.
Any questions for, for the treasurer? I'd entertain a motion to pass, uh, resolution number sixty-five, series twenty-twenty-two.
Don't make that motion.
Second, so we have Row, Lecretzi. Uh, this will be a roll call.
Trusty Cobb.
Yes.
Trusty Hilton, Hilton Henga.
Yes.
Trusty Jenkins.
Yes.
Trusty Lecretzi.
Yes.
Trusty Row.
Yes.
And is trustee Swisher on Zoom or did she?
She had to leave. She, her allergies were bothering her.
Okay, thank you.
She left at, uh, seven forty-two.
Right, I caught the.
I didn't know if she was gonna be on Zoom, so thank you. Okay, the motion passes. Now, um, I would entertain a motion to amend the budget, um, to accommodate this transaction. And, um, stop the other lease payments, uh, to make a budgetary change of a hundred and thirty-one thousand, seven hundred and ninety-eight. Second, we have Jenkins Cobb, uh, roll call, please.
Trusty Row.
Yes.
Trusty Lecretzi.
Yes.
Trusty Jenkins.
Yes. Yes.
Trusty Cobb, yes.
Great, that motion passes.
Thank you very much.
Okay, um, now we are at trustee staff interaction. Just to finish up what Grace Garrett was presenting at public comment. The, the two of them, um, Mary Ann Uzilak and Grace Garrett have been working for years. To try to get, um, the free post office boxes or home delivery. For residents of Vista. And, um, recently, uh, their requests have gone. And, and are getting actually some responses from Senator Bennett's office in particular. So, um, there's a meeting on the nineteenth of September with, with Senator Bennett's office. And, and hopefully the post office, um, bureaucrats. I mean, it's not just our local post office. But, um, so, so what's in your packet is on page one twenty-nine. Is a letter that I wrote, um, and I'd like for you to approve it or change it. It's a letter to Senator Bennett, um, just appreciating, you know, what the, what the women are. I call them the citizen advocates, what they've been doing. And, um, you know, uh, just saying that we, we would just like to be treated fairly. There are other towns where, uh, people don't pay for their post office boxes. And, um, you know, it's, it's a, it's just an unnecessary cost to our community. So I'd like for you to consider, um, you're supporting my signing that letter.
So Mary, will we be just be supporting your letter and not the ones that are attached to it? Is that my understanding?
Um, that, that is what it would be, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
I'll make a motion to approve, uh, the mayor signing this letter for Senator Bennett.
Second.
So we have, um, Row and Lecretzi. Yeah, all in favor? Any opposed? Phillip's been working on it too.
Thanks. Yeah. Thank you all for working on it. It's definitely something that is a very common issue in this town.
Oh, yeah, it, it really gets people angry.
The whole town is unified in that.
And Krista View is the same way, exactly the same story and a block long line of people.
Yeah, well, it seems like they're open more often now, so that's.
Yeah, and Elizabeth Colorado is in the same boat.
Yeah, I made a hundred and sixty-six. I think it's, that was like in August or, and it's gone up since then.
Yeah, it's a lot of money. Okay, well, thank you for your support. Good, um, Gina, we haven't heard from you in a while.
Um, let's see. Well, the only thing, um, really stands out, uh, I wanna give a big shout out to, uh, Shane and Leslie in the rec department. Um, she was able to host my Trail Sisters event here this past weekend and working with, uh, the rec department. They do an awesome job. Everything went super smooth and I attribute to good coordination and good people. So. Yeah, right. Oh, and I was able to, uh, swing over to the universal pre-K, meaning Leslie was Peter.
Oh, good.
Great. So just listen in and, and get a feel of a lot of, let's talk, some interesting stuff, so.
Yeah, good. Thank you. Peter, um, do you wanna chime in on that and, um, or anything else?
Uh, sure. Yeah, I mean, I think, uh, what we went over the meeting last night for the universal pre-K. Is kind of preliminary meeting with some different stakeholders. Um, kind of looking at how we're gonna actually implement the new program timelines. Um, uh, to, you know, be passed in twenty twenty, the, uh, universal pre-K. And, uh, there's a lot of, uh, I think hiccups that could be have. How are we gonna transition from current preschool programs that we have in funding to this new one? There's some fears that people who currently are able to go to preschool will have that restricted now because it's now different funding. Because the current funding is gonna be wrapped into this new universal pre-K and there's more restrictions. So there's a lot of fear from different parents and teachers that, um, this transition may leave certain families out. And, and but then there was also other stakeholders said that the, that funding is actually gonna be secured. And, uh, that it won't disrupt preschool, but that's all through kind of word of mouth and assurances that aren't actually written. And so I, there's no actual guarantee. They're just told by, um, folks that funding will be secure. So there, there's a lot of uncertainty there. Um, we, a major thing we talked about, which came up earlier, obviously. And we talked about earlier is just recruitment, uh, for teachers. Um, and how do we recruit people, um, who, uh, to go into, uh. Um, teaching and not to quite childcare, to girl child, early childhood education. There's two different things I don't wanna, um, fight to do, but that was a major part of the conversation is how do we actually get? As, um, get people to wanna go into this, because even if we have students who can go into pre-K and wanna go to, we don't actually have the faculty to do it. Like currently, there are many, there have been several openings and no applications, um, within this school district as it stands. So, um, try to brainstorm on that a bit too. So, but it's a long process until this actually goes in. This is the first part of it, so.
Can I add something quick?
Yeah, please.
Then the other thing that was just the general was that, um, it seems like they had mentioned that after the pandemic, that even the interest in being a teacher. Has been reduced. And so it's, it's harder in general than like the workforce and the incentive, like the perks. And I think you had come up with the perks idea last night, like how, what else could we do in the valley potentially like? You know, get people to come here, the ones that are willing to teach. So, but.
Yeah, I mean, that came from a former Summit County Commissioner. We talked about this issue of childcare in particular. And he said that, you know, you could try to get cheaper housing, but we can't subsidize completely. So that's not, there's no silver bullet there, but trying to reduce that, the costs there if possible. Work with local hospitals to find healthcare to try to minimize costs for the individuals. But the, some that actually worked really well at Summit was working with all of the different outdoor rec. In like Breckenridge and real resorts and stuff. And so like, if you go into the teaching and pressing, you get a free year-round unlimited ski pass and stuff like that. So that kinda like, it's obviously not gonna change it completely, but it's just again stacking things here and there. And so how do we, is it you get free pass and monitor and work with local businesses to kinda, uh, add perks with this? But I did want, before we move on, I did wanna mention beautification, um, in particular for everybody to pencil in the eighth. Saturday, October eighth, if you love dogs at least. If you don't love dogs, then you don't have to. We're gonna be trying to clean up the dog park as a community effort. And so, uh, if you have a weed whacker in particular, you're highly encouraged to join, uh, and come early. So we can kinda cut down weeds for everybody else to come and put it back. So. Um, there are several other things with the dog park, but I think some members of the committee might wanna come talk about that in another meeting. But in particular, I just say, if you could pencil that one in and come join in to clean up.
I have a couple of other things if I can tack to him on that.
Yeah, go ahead.
Beautification, because Peter is the trustee liaison and I'm the staff liaison for the beautification advisory board member. And at our last meeting, they had a gamut of things that they want to accomplish. And one of their big focuses is the dog park. And they have been getting, um, buy-in from the Chamber of Commerce. The Chamber of Commerce wants to partner with them on some different projects as well as Tractor Supply and True Value Raise Hardware now. They have donated, you know, benches and picnic tables over there at the dog park. So the ladies are really, um, making progress on that and they will be coming, like Peter said, to the board to discuss some other projects that they wanna have your blessing. And one of the things, um, that they're also working on is improving the corner of Forest Square Park. That's the corner there in front of the chapel. And so out of their budget, twenty twenty-two budget, they have, um, set aside five thousand dollars for those improvements. One of the things that they're running into is two large cottonwoods have to be removed. So they don't wanna go ahead and start that project as far as, um, planting the snow crab tree there and things. With running the risk that when they take down those cottonwood trees, that the limbs would fall on them. So what they're looking at and doing is rolling that project over to twenty twenty-three. So the five thousand dollars that's currently allocated in the twenty twenty-two, that would go to cost in twenty twenty-three. Because they talked about going ahead and purchasing bark and edging and things like that. But like the lady said, until they actually have the tree planted, they don't know how much they're going to need. So I met with Phillip and we talked about it and things. And at that time, he said, there's adequate funds to increase their twenty twenty-three budget by five thousand dollars to cover that cost. And to approach the board here to see if you, as a board, would consider allowing them to go ahead on that five thousand dollars that they have in their twenty twenty-two budget. To use that for other projects that they can do this year. One of the things that we talked about is at Christmas time, when they wrap the light posts and things, they put on those big red bows. And if any of you have spent any amount of time walking down the street, you can see the bows are in different qualities of condition and shape. I know they have spent time spray painting the bows, trying to bring back the more red versus the faded red. So they were going to buy ten bows, you know, because they were looking at doing it as a staggered project each year. But if you were to allow them to use that five thousand dollars this year, they would buy additional bows to try to get that project done this year. So.
Paula, is that five thousand? Is it pre-mitigation or removal? Is that involved in that five thousand or is that a separate?
That's separate. That's separate. So that comes out of public works, since that was something to do with the park. Do we need to wait for them to come before the board to consider this or?
I don't think so. I, I think it's pretty clear cut. Um, I, my, my, my advice to Paula was based on, um, trying to track carryover projects from year to year. Is, um, uh, yeah, it can get a little messy. And so at five thousand dollars, my opinion is they have other things that they can spend that money on that's value to town. And they should proceed with that if the board agrees, but the board needs to know about it since that was part of their original plan for this year. And then in next year's budget, I think it's a worthy, still a worthy project on the, the forest square, uh, corner. And they can add that to their plan for next year. So instead of trying to track those funds carrying over, there's plenty to do, I think. So that was my advice, but the board needs to kinda weigh in on that.
Will the five thousand dollars cover the bows? They'll do as much as they can and then if they still have other bows to purchase, they'll roll that over to twenty twenty-three.
So the forest, is it, is it that little triangle that's on the, on the west side of twenty-four?
Let's see. You know where the chapel is?
Yeah.
That's that area is Horseford Park.
Okay, but isn't that other little triangle part of the park too?
That's Charles.
That's Charles Street, but it is, it is technically part of that park.
But that's not what we're talking about. Okay.
But that is, um, one of the projects for twenty twenty-three to work on that little Charles Street park.
I'm happy to make a motion so that they could utilize the funds for. The bows now. Yeah, I.
Trying to save you from having to go. Yeah, I don't know what else there is to say.
Would you read back the motion, please?
Well, I am going to listen to the tape because I'm also listening and trying to capture that while you all are talking. It's a little difficult. If I understand, the motion has been made to approve the beautification advisory board to utilize the five thousand dollars for purchasing bows. Good. Is that going to be adequate or?
I was okay with, I would, for me, make a motion that would fit what I was trying to say.
Should it be to be able to use it this year for projects or do we want to specify it as bows?
I mean, we should do twenty twenty-two projects in twenty twenty-two.
Yeah, that's fine.
Just get that flex building. In case it turns out to be a ribbon, not a bone and. Five thousand dollars seems like a lot for bows. They're gonna last for like twenty years.
So they were ten bows, so.
Ten?
Fifteen hundred dollars. So see, they were gonna replace them in lots. And you have to look at the size of them. Plus, what they've explained to me over the years is they have, you know, they get a lot of sun, they get a lot of snow, they get a lot of wind. It's not just like the bows that you put on the gift that you give to your girlfriends and things.
Obviously, I don't know about bows.
But also if they're spray painting and doing that kinda stuff, that's not sustainable. No, no, no.
Sure. Christmas gift, they're also gonna be made out of wood and very sturdy this year.
That's true.
Oh, in favor of both.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
And I just have one more thing, why, my name, and I will hush up. Okay, intergovernmental meeting. I didn't get to hear from everybody. If I didn't hear from you, does that mean you're not going? I have heard Libby, Cindy, Sue are going. Mark is a no.
I've.
Yes?
Yeah.
And Devin?
Uh, no, I've got to work.
Here I am.
And Peter?
Twenty-nine.
It's fine.
Waiting on my mom.
Okay.
Bring your mom?
It's the twin.
Great. Thank you. We will.
Yeah, that's a good.
Yeah, no, I'm excited.
They serve steak and ponchus. It's getting good.
Add most grills.
So should we go ahead and talk about the Peak to Peak Pickleball?
Sure.
Uh, grand opening? Is that going to happen, I guess?
Hope so.
When I talked to the recs director today, talking about that, yes, they're working on the final preparations just to make it sort of the parking lot area is just going to be kind of sectioned off a little bit for the time being. Um, but yes, they are planning on still moving forward with the ceremony.
Right, cool. So actually, I had heard from somebody that, that you have to RSVP if you do want to attend to that. I don't see that on here unless yeah, I don't really see that on there, but somebody had said.
I think it's maybe it's your plane. No, no.
I'll just check that. Yeah, I can check that out.
Show up the wristbands.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's kind of crazy considering like five years ago, they showed up and yelled at us because they wanted pickleball here. I think it was me and Mark and Phillip and Joel. They're like, we need the space and test people.
Pretty amazing. And now we've got courts with lights and shade and.
They don't have to share with anybody.
Prevented us.
Have a nice website. I didn't know what pickleball was until five years ago.
Not old.
Yeah. Mark? Mark's directing traffic. He's sitting there next.
What's up?
Well, he's next.
Well, I'm next. Yeah, I'm, the only thing I wanted to say that I should have said before was, but I went to the record meeting and the opportunity afterwards to go check out the McGinnis Gym that's being renovated by Rick Eaterman. And it was super interesting. You know, my impression from meetings a long time ago is that place was condemned and terrible and it looks all right. And it's a Rick is working with the school district because that's owned by the school district to bring that back to life. So uh, super great on him. I know he has a social media watershed BV that he started posting little updates about it. So if anyone's interested and if anyone's interested checking it out, I'd contact Rick.
How about Katie? She's involved in the two.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I know. It's, it's going to be an awesome space. It's obviously not large enough for a full basketball court, but um, they're going, the school district is going to work with us to have ex, extra space and to use that. So Rick was telling me the original uh, outhouse pits are intact under the stage, which I thought was interesting. They're like brick lined. So maybe we use that.
Yeah, that's quite a nice project.
Yeah, it's a cool building to check out.
Yeah, and they can get fifty percent tax credits for what they're doing on it, which is really good.
Yeah.
Well, good. Thank you. And Sue?
I have just one thing that I mentioned last time that I'm, I'm just as a new member on the airport advisory board. I'm going to be taking a tour and we were trying to get it to coincide with these great helicopters that are coming in. And it got a little delayed, but we are now going to try to do it either next Wednesday or Thursday. And anybody on the board or staff want to come out, you know, and you have a certain availability those days, I can lobby for that. So just talk to me maybe after the meeting or shoot me an email.
Yeah, the airport board is thrilled that you've been going to their meetings. Oh, it's really good. I went to their, their drone around up and did a little welcome from the town. And I also spoke into the Optimist Club and the Chamber of Commerce and the, the optimists in particular offer their services. If, you know, if the town has anything they want volunteers for, the optimists are ready to go. And there's a lot of energy at the chamber right now. It's just Heather is bringing a lot of enthusiasm there, I think. So, yeah. Um, okay, Mark, are you ready yet?
Yeah, yeah, just one thing. CML is offering an effective governance, governance workshop, December first. They haven't opened up the registration yet, but I encourage trustees maybe to look into that. I think it'd be a good training for us. So, but it is December first and I'm not sure, it says it's all day, one day workshops. I don't know if it's Zoom or it's live or what it is, but more information coming soon, I think, on the flyers.
Okay.
That's it.
Great. Phillip? Nothing?
Nothing.
Happy.
Yeah, I, I've got a few things a little later, but one thing, since we talked about it in oh, last time, you guys remember we were talking about Department Corrections and the Water Service Agreement? And we had discussed, not with date certain, but to bring back a resolution just to say, hey, let's disconnect. Well, they contacted us, thanks Peter, I believe, or it was a strange coincidence. But, um, so if, if it's okay if we bring back a resolution a little later, because we don't know what the situation is going to be, if we can get some progress in actually getting that water service agreement or not, though we're hopeful again. So if that's okay with you, I'll bring that resolution back if needed sometime in the future.
Right, okay.
And that's all I have for this part.
Lisa?
I don't think so. I don't. I'm sure next time I will.
You found a place to live for now?
I did, I did. And so um, and they have been very gracious and wonderful people to have an apartment in. Basically, it's a house with a couple of other areas. So it's nice. Um, and I appreciate what they've done to kind of accommodate that. So, but it will be very temporary. I've already put an offer on a house and so I'm actually hoping that it will be the March cutoff that that'll greatly please you, that'll, it'll be way less than that. So I'm hoping that works out.
Yeah, very good. Good.
And that'll be within five miles, one year. So gave you fifteen, I gave you five.
Miss anybody?
Say a couple of things, man.
Yeah.
Um, I, I'm about half an hour or so for you all, so if you. Um, quick, brief reminder for your calendars. You all offered to join P and Z for the joint sketch planning session on Crosswind Edition. It's scheduled for October fifth at seven PM. Um, so I'll bring this up again at the next trustee meeting just to make sure it's not front and center, but if you wouldn't mind making sure that's on your calendars.
That's at seven o'clock?
Yes. Just a brief FYI in case anyone asks if you knew about it, September twenty-first, the meeting has been canceled by the, the chair of that board. There was nothing for the agenda. So just want to make you aware that they will not be holding their second meeting September. Um, and then finally, uh, on the design regulations for East Main Street, we have been continuing to hold public discussions on that. Um, the next of which will be a work session with the Historic Preservation Commission on October sixth at five thirty PM. Um, that will be here in this room and open to the public. We invited uh, business owners and, and property owners from East Main Street um, as well as putting out the blast out in general. Um, I would say that there's a general sentiment that I have and that I've heard from other folks in the public that we, we don't want to rush into creating regulation. Um, we want to make sure that the process we have is defensible and that the voices we've heard have been acknowledged and and input has been received and considered. So I would just offer that from staff perspective that um, I'm not trying to push this on an arbitrary deadline, but instead trying to make sure that we hear from folks um, as is proven. So just want to raise that. I know you all were looking forward to hearing um, about potential code changes potentially in October. I'm not sure that's realistic anymore. Um, but I'll keep you updated.
If I could add on just a little bit to that, because I did attend the meeting, uh, that was last month, but I don't know, earlier this month, just and I, I really want to applaud Joseph. It was a, a lively meeting and he did a great job of sort of letting it go where it needed to go. And it did become clear to me too that we probably do need the extra time to get the parties to come together and um, I just, our close mother, they will, and really understand more about the guidelines and have more input, so. And so thank you, Joseph. You, you really took a lot of chin that night.
Thank you.
All right. So if there's nothing else, then we have an executive session proposed. Jack, I see your name up there. Are you still with us? Is there anybody else that wants to speak?
No, I'm good. Thank you very much. Have a great evening.
Oh, there's Joe.
Sorry, I cut Jack off there.
I think he was saying he didn't have anything to say.
So I've been keeping quiet because you've been all doing everything perfectly. So I'll just, I'll wait for the executive session.
Okay, there we go. Get ready. Um, okay. Um, I'd like to have a motion from someone to move that we enter into an executive session.
So move.
Second.
So we got Jenkins Cobb. Um, the topic of the executive session is to, I guess we should vote.
You, you actually need to read out the full motion. That's what the law requires, sorry.
Okay, does the full motion include the, the announced topic?
That's right. So it would be a motion to move into executive session as stated in the agenda.
Okay. I would entertain a motion to an executive session as stated in the agenda.
Okay, sorry, I'm not being clear here. You need to read out the entire quotation there on section eleven.
Okay, and exec, all right. This will be a motion to support going into an executive session to determine positions relative to matters that may be subject to negotiations, develop a strategy for negotiations and or instruct negotiators pursuant to CRS section twenty-four dash six dash four oh two practices for, this is E concerning the acquisition of water rights. Do I hear a motion to that effect?
So move.
Second.
Okay, Jenkins Cobb. Um, let's vote. To go into executive session or not? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, so we have the votes to go into executive session. And a motion passed. So now we have the executive session, which will relieve Paula. And we'll keep, the press can leave. Thank you so much. So we'll keep Joel. Joseph, I guess you're not part of this one.
Um, you can head out. You don't need to stay on.